All right, good evening. This work session of the School Board of Osseo Area Schools is being held in the Media Center at Brooklyn Middle Steam School on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website within two business days after the work session is ended. With regard to the audio recording, our communication staff has asked that we share a brief, a friendly reminder. The side conversations during the work session are picked up by the recorder and can affect sound quality. Also, conversations during transitions between agenda items are on the recording as well. The intent of the school board work session is to allow for school board discussion of topics. Work sessions do not include an opportunity for audience members to address the board. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that all present at the table state their names, starting with the person to the left.
Tanya Prince, school board member.
Kim Heil, superintendent.
Brian Seversall, executive director of community engagement.
Keith Tate, school board member.
Anthony Panis, executive director of technology.
Yvonne Scherksland, executive director of HR.
Kim Well, executive director of community relations.
Kim Monet, principal at Brooklyn Middle Steam School.
Megan Havelak, assistant principal at Brooklyn Middle.
Amy Tolson, district principal.
Naomi Cooper, school board representative.
Aliya Jima, school board representative.
Christian Bargat, school board representative.
Heykum Adam, school board representative.
Ryan Bass, assistant superintendent for the achievement in the high schools.
Paula Forbes with the Finding Human Institute.
Robin Francis with the Finding Human Institute.
Erica Foster, school board member.
Steve Flesk, assistant superintendent for the elementary and middle schools.
Kelsey Dawson, school board member.
Amy Moore, general counsel.
And I, Thomas Brooks, school board member and president. The purpose of school board work sessions is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision making at regular board meetings. Dr. Heil, will you please show your check in?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Brooks, Chair Prince, and school board members. We are thrilled to be at Brooklyn Middle Steam School today. And we will have Kim Monet, net principal, and Megan Havelak, assistant principal, share more about with this fabulous program here. And we also just had an incredible tour of the newly remodeled Brooklyn Middle. So ladies.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Heil. I'd like to welcome Chair Prince, Vice Chair Brooks, as well as all school board members, as well as Superintendent Dr. Heil and all cabinet members and members of our community. So welcome to Brooklyn Middle Steam School. I am Kim Monet, principal of the building, and I have been the principal for about 23 years now. Yes, so that's kind of crazy. Don't, don't think about how old I am. And Naomi was one of our students, so we're representing Brooklyn as well. I'm here to talk about our instructional practices that we have at Brooklyn. And I want to start out with our strategic priorities. And we all, this is not unfamiliar to anybody in this room at all, and that this really is the driver and the why behind all of our work. And so tonight, I'm going to talk about B, which is really building and nurturing a culture of achievement by providing content rich, rigorous, equitable, and individualized pathways. But focusing on B1 and B2, ensuring and confirming each scholar has access to high-quality core instruction and interventions across the system. And B2, improving pathways for college and career readiness to unleash student agency. So we know that that is a satellite view, right, about what's happening for our district. And our priority is, how do we get it into a laser-like view in a building? So what does that look like in a building? So at Brooklyn, to build and nurture culture of achievement by providing content and rich, rigorous, equitable, individualized pathways. For B1, we do teacher clarity. And teacher clarity work ensures that equitable access to high-quality, tier-one instruction and interventions across the school are established, and they are shared, we have a shared explicit blueprint of what that looks like in each and every classroom. And to support with a lens with teacher clarity, again, B2 is that teacher clarity work improves pathways for college and career readiness by making learning intentions, success criteria, and relevancy of learning for students, which explicitly shifts students from being passive learners to being active learners in their own learning, which then, looking at their growth, is actually really explicit about student agency. So our teacher clarity journey, we have been on this path for quite some time, for a few years. And we knew that, coming out of COVID, that we had a lot of retirements that were coming up. And so as we looked at our five-to-seven-year path, we knew that a lot of our teachers were retiring, because I had a staff that was 15 to 40 years of service for Osseo Area Schools. And so we knew that we had to plan on new teachers taking those spots. And so that meant that I had to really think about, how do I increase our instructional process and, and practice in teaching new teachers coming in, what it is to work in a building and have really, really tool, tools in their tool belt, is what I call it. And so Megan and I had had some experience with John Hattie's work and his teacher clarity work before, but we really didn't have a handle on what that was. And so we decided in 2022, 23, that we would go to John Hattie's Visible Learning Workshop in, in Colorado. And so we learned a little bit more about teacher clarity work. And so that was in 2022, 23. We brought it back to our building that year, and we started talking about learning intentions and success criteria, and what that was, and how did that look like in a classroom? What did that mean? And so we needed to make sure that teachers understood what they were teaching and how they were teaching it, and being very explicit about that, as well as, how do we know that teachers or kids understand the success? And so really being clear that if teachers are clear about their instruction, then kids are really clear about their learning. And when that happens, then kids become independent and owners of their learning, right? They're in charge of that. And so as we move forward, we kind of dabbled in learning intentions and success criteria, trying to get that really solid. Well, then the second year, we decided to bring our instructional leadership team, because those are the ones who are going to really bring that work to all of our staff through our PD, through our staff meetings, as well as through our collaboration time. And so then we had, we had them go with us, and then we became really clear. So now I have some instructional leaders that are really clear about what is expected in a classroom and how to make instruction explicit. And so then we worked really hard with our staff, all of our staff, our new staff. So keep in mind that as we're moving forward, we're getting all these new staff. I had seven staff members retire one year, five another year, three another year. So you can imagine how that, how that changes the culture of your building, right? And so you really have to, you know, be really intentional about how you're going to bring people on and how you are going to onboard all your new teachers. And so then we had some leaders that were teaching learning intentions and success criteria, and then we continued on with relevancy, why kids are learning what they're learning, and then moving through for this year. We're still doing all of those things with learning intention, success criteria, relevancy, and now explicit teaching on critical reading strategies through Avid. So that's our journey. We're still on. So once again, why visible learning? I talked about the reason for the change, because that we knew that we were having a lot of turnover in regards to retirements, and that didn't, that also included teachers that were being advanced into the district by becoming district employees for SDAS positions, ATTPS coaches, and other leadership positions in the district. And then our strategic insight was that we recognized the urgency that we had to build internal capacity for our new teachers, and then adopting high-impact strategies that were really focused from John Hattie's work, from visible learning. He is the researcher of instructional research, and so we really wanted to hone in on teacher clarity work that really breaks down instruction, so we can really be explicit with students about what they're learning and why they're learning it, so they can become learners of their own learning.
So some of you might be wondering, like, what is visible learning and how does that really situate itself in our classrooms? And so really, visible learning is really a meta-analysis of all research that's being done around best practices. So high operational practices in the classroom are all studied, they're all analyzed, and then it creates what's called an effect size. And so we figure out, an effect size means that it's going to move kids the average growth, right? And so if something has an effect size of .4, what that means is, we're going to grow them one year. Well, we know that many of our kids are starting a little bit lower than, than they're not proficient at this point, and just growing them one year is not going to be adequate, because we only have three short years with our kids to get them ready for high school. And so we have to grow them faster, stronger, and all these things have to happen in a very short period of time. So the reason that we chose teacher clarity is because teacher clarity has an impact size of .85. So .4 means they're growing one year, and we're doing teacher clarity work. The idea behind it is if our teachers are clear on what they're teaching, and our students know what they're supposed to walk out of every single class knowing what to do, that they will grow by .85, just using that impact strategy in its whole approach. And so that's one of the reasons why we've honed so far in on making sure that our teachers know exactly what they are teaching, our students know exactly what they're expected to learn on a surface level, on a deeper level, on a transfer level, and then we're also bringing in, how do we make it relevant to our students? Because if it's not relevant, they're not going to really care or dive into it. And so really honing in on those three pieces, while, as Kim talked about, adding in some of our Tier Two and Three vocabulary, as well as the explicit instruction around critical reading strategies, is really just helping all of these pieces that we know are going to grow our students more than just one year in the year, in hopes that in the three years we can get them at grade level, so that we, they can enter high school ready to graduate and continue their success. So really, it emphasizes that shifting focus on what teachers do and how the impact of what they do changes how kids are learning in the classroom. So we're using this data-driven framework, and just so you know, there's a website, it's called MetaX, and if you Google MetaX, it's going to be your top Google hit. And you can put in any instructional strategy, and it will tell you the effect size of that strategy. You can go in and you can put in gallery walk, and it's going to tell you, what is that, what is a gallery walk in a classroom? How can that impact students? It'll also tell you, what is a gallery walk? How can you do a gallery walk? So it'll give you all, all of those underlying pieces as well to help set the stage. So these are strategies that our teachers are familiar with, we're using when we're having conversations about how do we teach that in the classroom? We'll open MetaX and say, I don't know, let's, let's look it up, let's try a couple of different things, what do we think would be the most impactful strategy to use for that type of learning? And so through this common vision, using visible learning and the concept behind really making sure that every strategy we're putting in front of our students is about making sure that they're successful and that they're growing more than just one year in the year that we have them for each grade level. And so our common vision that we work with our instructional coaches with, we're working with our teachers on, and we're having consistent collaborative time around all of our PD is focused on this. All of our system meetings are focused on this, our collaboration time, our PLT work. We're all focused on these same exact strategies and really making sure that the entire building is onboard. As Kim stated earlier, we want to continue to build the tool belt, because the reality is, we know that we have some teachers that are new to our building, and we have veteran teachers, and together, when we put them in the room together, that's a lot of brain power that we can certainly capitalize on. So it's really about maximizing our veteran teachers, as well as helping some of our new teachers who are coming in with new strategies, and making sure we elevate them in the classrooms as well. So we continue to believe in just really preparing our students, truly following our mission about building competence purge and competence. We're also really working to provide STEAM experiences for our students, using these as outlets and different avenues for bringing in the STEAM aspect and the Avid aspect into all of the lessons that our students are having put in front of them. And we really believe that teacher clarity is one of the avenues to bring us more growth, higher proficiency, and more success for our students learning in the classroom. We, we feel as a building that we, if we have high expectations and believe that all students will grow exceptionally, not simply making normal progress. As we said, we can't grow them just a year each year that we have them, because that's not going to be enough for our students that are coming in behind. So our core notion is that those who have high or low expectations tend to have this for all students. And so it's about raising the bar, so that our teachers have high expectations, because our students will meet those high expectations. Every time someone raises the bar, they'll find a way to jump over it. And at BMS, we really truly do expect greatness, both of our staff, as well as of our students. We have a classroom and school climate that starts with high expectations, because we know that we'll get what we expect. So if we expect a lot, we're going to get a lot out of our students. And that is the BMS way.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
So board members, we are already over, but, but any questions?
I do have a question. I mean, it sounds great. I am super, it's great. But like, in practice, like, what, what's an example? Like, what would it be, like, what's the difference between, like, what makes it different? I mean, you described it, but like, if I'm in a classroom, like, what would, would I notice anything different?
Well, what I think is, well, here's an example. We had a magnet school evaluation a couple of years ago, and when they, when the magnet evaluators came up to our building, he goes, are you a visible learning school? And I go, why, why do I mess that? And they go, because when I went into your classroom, I asked, I always ask students, what are you learning? And he goes, well, our learning intention, so students are like, our learning intention is this. Well, how do you know, how do you know you know what? Well, our success criteria is this, and the reason why we're learning this is because of this. And I was like, exactly. So because if, if teachers are clear about what they are putting in front of kids, that they know where they want their students to go in their classroom, kids become clear, like, how can I be successful? And we all want to know why we have to do something, doesn't matter how old we are, it really doesn't. Dr. Heil? But we really have the relevancy. And when you have relevancy for students, then you're like, oh, I get what I need, why I need this. And so it really impacts students taking ownership of their own learning. So then they become independent learners with just student agency, right?
Yeah. And that was in multiple classrooms, true.
It was, it was actually multiple classrooms that it happened. It wasn't just one. Every classroom that he went to, kids had that same answer. So it's really about that clarity for both teachers and students alike.
That's all. Thank you.
I get that same question at home. Why do the F's? It would help parents also.
We'll do assessments for parents. I feel like you should learn a lot.
Give some talking points.
That's great. And we all get to ask questions during the tour, too, so.
Yeah, right.
The building looks amazing.
I was just wondering, if you still, like, base, like, the student's ability to learn off a test, like, you know how you take that big MDA test?
Oh, MCA.
Yeah, do you still base it off of that?
We still have to use that as a, as a point of reference, right? Because that's a test in one day, right? And not, not everyone tests well, right? And so there's multiple checkpoints for kids, for progress in classrooms, so different progress reports and those types of things that we want to, want to do for kids as well.
Okay, that's a good point.
Yeah. Yeah, you always have to look at those tests anyway, because you want to see where everyone is at, and then what can we do differently, right? And how can we support students in different ways?
Good question.
Yes, great question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Speaking of student empowerment, we're going to keep going here. So this evening, we do have our student school board representatives in attendance to give us, to share some of their brilliance. We're going to have Dr. Ryan Bass introduce, introduce our group.
Tess, can you all hear okay? Is that me? Okay, great. We had some, I checked in with some audience members to make sure the microphone would be helpful when I said yes, so we use, we use the microphone. So good evening, thank you, Dr. Heil. Good evening, Chair Prince, Vice Chair Brooks, members of the school board, our students, school board reps, our cabinet and community. So our outcomes for this evening's presentation is that board members will learn about the purpose and history of the student stakeholder survey, learn about the survey refinement process for collecting student input, and learn about the role of the student school board reps in the design and recommendation process. And then lastly, we'll have a little discussion with school board reps. So the why for this work, you may recall, in our review of some of our stakeholder survey data, that some of those items you all had given us feedback on, when we reviewed that data, felt like they were not as contextually relevant for today's scholars, and felt like they were outdated. And so that, that is a key reason why we want to revisit these scales and make sure that they speak, they speak to our scholars today. So this work aligns to two of our strategic directions, create safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environments. That's going to be a focus of a couple of the, of the items that we're going to ask students to respond to and give us feedback on. And then our second area is building and nurturing a culture of, of achievement. So, so with that, we all know that when we went out to the community to get their input on attendance boundaries, that they really appreciated us slowing down and holding space multiple times for them to be able to provide input. And then as a, as a staff, we then made some adaptations to reflect the feedback that was given to us. And we want to engage the same process with our scholars. We want to get their input on the scales, want to get their input on safety, welcoming, belonging, and inclusive communities, as well as student agency and future-ready learning. We want to hear from our scholars. We're going to get that input, we'll go back to them and make sure we got that right, and then we will go ahead and revise that. So the, the concept of holding space is equally important and valuable in this space as well. With that, I should, everybody else has introduced themselves, and so I won't reintroduce everybody, but there wasn't space at the table for Dr. Tom Watkins yet, but I do want to welcome and introduce Dr. Tom Watkins, who is our data and assessment coordinator from our learning achievement department. And he will speak to our historical overview and the purpose of the student stakeholder survey. I'm going to ask you all to pass the microphone down to him. Thank you. Got to say, I was a little bit in my feels when I saw that I was going to be speaking to the historical overview. What does this say about, is this, is the word going to be legacy next? Classic? You know, anyway, I had some fun with it, and I got over myself, and I'm like, this is here for the kids. I just, I love how you started that whole piece with the why, because that's where I was, that's where my mind was too, and that's where I'm going to speak to, is the purpose here. So paraphrasing Nietzsche, right, everybody has heard this, if you have a why to live, you can bear almost anyhow. And so to me, within our system, I feel like each one of us has seen transformation happening. You guys maybe in yourselves, and other people that you know, other students. And to me, that is just so beautiful, right? And that's really where the mission started, right? That's where our mission survey started, was the hope of that transformation and having the community surrounding our young people, so that they can go through that transformation. So that's really what the purpose, it started with a mission, and then it also is providing site leaders with feedback, and then also teachers getting feedback. We can go to the next slide. So then, 2011, 12, that was the year we started with this, what we called the mission survey, that was really just trying to start to get student perceptions about the mission and our progress on the mission, to go along with what we'd already been collecting in terms of adult perceptions and actions towards the mission. And so that was the piece that was starting to change at that time. And so those first three scales came directly from the mission, right? And it's really still there. That's where those questions were. And then in 2314, that's when the mission survey becomes the stakeholder survey, and we add some other scales that are dealing with our priority work at that time, which we have a lot of overlap between the priority work then and what we're doing now. And the next slide, so this was where things started to change more significantly. There was a big movement, measure effective teaching, a major study, a national study that was done, and there was this tripod survey that was an important part about that measuring effective teaching study. And so research-based indicators that we now started to incorporate. Minneapolis had done a pilot with their staff and with students and getting those perceptions, and after going through those pilot phases, then we came in at that point, and we decided to adopt some of those questions and scales that Minneapolis had used. And so then from that time, 24, 14, 15, up until 22, 23, we had this teacher feedback loop. So teachers would get an immediate report once they were done with the survey, and so they could get that feedback from the students in their classes. And then, so we, so then, in addition to having these classroom-level scales that would be in those teacher reports, there was also a school report that would have gone to the principal that was not teacher-level results, but it was school-level results, and maybe groups within the school to inform that school improvement process. And so they used those same questions, and they were just organized a little bit differently for those different purposes. So then on the next slide, this is where we see, we really kind of stuck with that survey, the combination of the student engagement side and then the school improvement side. And that's really what we had going through the 22, 23 school year. And then in 23, 24, that's when we decided to remove those teacher-level questions and scales, and I think at that time, it was considered a pause or a stop. We hadn't really made a final decision about that. It's just that that particular time, we were going to pause as we're going to this new survey system. And then last year, we administered it very much in the way that it was done before. So I think those were the main things I wanted to cover, and I think I'm going to hand it off to you next. Thank you.
All right. Well, we have a great opportunity this year to be working with our students, and as we introduced them at the beginning of the year, we said that this kind of program is going to be refined this year, and this is one of the ways that we're going to enter into collaborating with our student board reps differently. So they are going to help us to think about, what are these big areas that we want to engage with and get more student voice, and help us think about, what are some of those bigger questions or bigger themes that they really also want to hear from, and sort of guide the development of some of those questions? And then eventually, as we're, as Paula and Robin are here and partnering with the Finding Human Institute, we are also going to then be working with them to go out and hear from a lot more of our scholars at different age groups. So you're going to hear more of this detailed process as we go on, but I'm just going to start at a high level and talk about our timeline. So as I was asked by Dr. Heil and Dr. Bass to think about, is this something that we can do this year to work with our scholars, and so that we would have these revised questions in place in February, March timeline, which is typically when we administer that survey? And of course, the answer was, yes, we can. So here we are, and we've gone through the first phase of this, and this is all a new process for us, but it is exciting. We had our first meeting in September, working together as a team, thinking about, what does this look like? What are some of these big questions? And we're going to, again, share some of the specifics of that. So that happened in August, September. We're going to be moving into launching those listening sessions. So Paula and Robin will be going out to schools, talking more with scholars, they'll talk more about that. Then we're going to be, again, analyzing some of that feedback with our student school board reps in the middle of the year. And then eventually, towards January, we're going to really refine some of those questions and make sure that that is in place, so that we can go out and administer those different scales. And that's all in collaboration with our student school board reps. So this is a new process for us, and we're very excited, and we'll see how this goes. So we talked about a couple of our big areas, which where we are starting, which was around safety and belonging and inclusion, and that's where we thought we were going to land. But upon further reflection, we had more conversation and said, well, wait a minute. But upon further reflection, we had more conversation and said, well, wait a minute. How do we really separate belonging and inclusion? They're so similar. And we actually also want to get some more information around student agency as well as future-ready. And so all of those big areas are specifically pulled out of our strategic plan and really want to think about what are these big categories that we want to think more deeply about? So that's where we're starting. Our student board reps helped shape some questions specifically around safety and belonging and inclusion. So they'll be sharing those a little bit later in our presentation. So I'm gonna pass it off to Paula and Robin to share more about our partnership and the process.
Okay. I feel like we get to do the most fun work of it all, Paula and I, is to really engage with the students. So as Amy mentioned, we really started the process with creating the right questions. We had to be able to ask the students the right questions. And to do that, we needed the students' input. So on the 23rd of September, we met with the students and we really wrestled with creating questions that were developmentally appropriate for each of the grade levels that we were gonna key into. So I don't know about you all, but I had a really good time doing that because we really challenged ourselves and we pushed each other, not only us pushing the students, but they pushed us as well as adults to really make sure we were asking the right questions so we could get to the information that we wanted. So we started there. And then we will be breaking it down into grades four and five. We'll have two listening sessions for grades six through eight. We'll have three listening sessions in grades nine through 12. We will have four listening sessions. And then the format that we're going to use is a World Cafe format, where we have three powerful questions that we'll ask the student groups. And then we will use that information, and Paula will talk about that in a little bit, to really synthesize the information that we collect. On to the students.
Okay. So for grades four and five, we wanted the questions to be easygoing to understand, but still give us that more kind of powerful response to. So for safety, we thought of, when do you feel safe at school and what helps you feel that way? Belonging, we thought of, what has a student or teacher done that helped you feel like you belong? And for inclusion, we got, what could we do so that every student feels included in our school? So yeah, we did make sure that for grades four and five, it was easier for them to think about, easier for them to, you know, process and give us the answer that we can, in the end, make sure that their thoughts and ideas and problems and issues are being handled in that survey.
And then for grades six to eight, we wanted to keep like the same main idea of the questions, but go into it a little bit deeper. So for safety, we said, if you could change one thing about our school to make it safer, what would it be? For belonging, when have you felt hurt in spaces with students or adults at school? And for inclusion, what are some ways you have personally included others or seen others include you? So with these, it's asking for specific examples, because if we get specific examples, we hopefully replicate that to make even more people feel as safe and like feel safety, belonging, and inclusion.
Now we're in the high school levels, so we're in grades nine through 12. So we go a little bit deeper and we try to touch on more specific stuff so they can answer it. And hopefully it's understandable since we wrote the questions. For safety, what does feeling safe at school mean to you physically, emotionally, and socially? For belonging, we have, have you ever felt hurt in spaces with people in power, like principals, teachers, or district leaders? And what difference does it make? For inclusion, we have, imagine our school as a place where all students feel included. What would it look like, sound like, and feel like? And how could you help make it happen? So we want people to really like dive deep, because we know what they can think. They wrote essays. They can do this. We want them to just get into it.
So I don't know how many of you have participated in a World Cafe, but it's a really fun process with powerful questions that they've developed. And what we ask people to do with big sheets in the middle of the table is to play doodle and draw and really have conversations about each question. And then they change tables and they have another question. And you take all of that collective energy. We always say that the right people are always in the room. Whatever happens, happens. And whatever shows up, shows up. So the information that we get from those World Cafes, we'll take all of that raw data back and have a synthesis workshop. We put all of the table posters, everything that the students talked about in the room. And we will come back, all of us, and look at it and say, what is it telling us to do? What are they asking for? What are the answers to these questions telling us in the direction that we need to take? We will synthesize that into recommendations for questions. And those will go back to you, Tom, to turn into the right survey question and give the students an opportunity to look at those questions again before they get developed into the survey come January and February.
All right. So that's the update on the survey design process, a little flavor of the questions that will be posed into students. And then this next part is for our student school board reps to share a bit more perspective from you all about what it means for you to be involved and engaged in this process. You have these questions ahead of time, but I'll pose the first question to you and just give you a chance to share if you feel comfortable sharing. When you think about sharing your voice in this process, what would you like the end result to reflect? At the end of this, what would you like the end result to reflect based on your voice in the process?
Could they name their school again, too?
Yeah. Okay. So I'm Nick Madam and I represent Osseus Senior High. And for me, I would like the end result to reflect, just help students who are in my position, students who kind of have the same problems or similar issues, get better help and better kind of fix that problem toward that.
My name is Christian Vargas and I represent OALC. Being a part of this process means a lot of things, but I want the end result to show that us as students can make a really big impact in how our class is really important to everyone at this table.
My name is Ali Ajewa and I represent Maple Grove Senior High. And I think I want the end result to be some like action steps taken because we're spending a lot of time and effort like creating these survey questions and making the survey for students to take. But at the end of the day, if we were just giving them the survey and leaving it, we're not really making much of a difference. So I hope that with the data that we collect from the survey, we're able to do things with it to make the schools like more inclusive.
My name is Naomi Cooper. I'm from Park Center. And I just want there to be, I wouldn't say clarity, but more like more visual action. Because let's just start with BMS. You can clearly see something happening in this school. Like this room did not look like this room. That's like, that's visible change. And I feel like students need visual change. They don't see all this. They don't see the board meetings. I don't think they want to see the board meetings. I think they want to see that something's happening. We're not dumb. We obviously see stuff is going on in our school and we see problems, but some people are too afraid to speak up about it. So to have, like, to see or know that people are doing something about a problem you have, it really helps people, like, genuinely.
Hold on, hold on to, just hold on to the mic. I'm gonna use my teacher voice. Our next question, if the survey could help improve one part of your school experience, safety, belonging, and inclusion, student agency, or future-ready, which would you pick and why?
Do I gotta answer it first? Wait, hold on. Can you explain student agency?
So student agency would be your confidence and your ability to navigate whatever learning's in front of you or whatever challenges are in front of you? That you know how to advocate for yourself, advocate for how you learn best, advocate for what would support you as a scholar?
I think student agency, mainly because safety isn't an aspect I'm too worried about. I mean, I feel safe around my classmates. I feel safe around my teachers. So I think we're fine on that part. We have a really strong community at Park Center. I feel like if you go to any activity, they'll be like, oh, we're like family. I say the same thing. So they're really stealing my quotes here. But I think student agency. There's a lot of confidence in our school, but not a lot of, how do I put this? I would say, oh yeah, I'm gonna, maybe it's future-ready. I'm gonna go to college and do this. I'm gonna, they just kind of like junior year and then whip you around to senior year. And they're just like, so what college are you going to? I don't know. So I think there needs to be a little more preparation, but not too much. Because if you keep on shoving it in my face, I won't want to do it.
I think for Maple Grove Senior High, I would want the survey to help improve belonging because I go to a school that's 70% white and 30% people of color. And it doesn't always feel like that. A lot of the time, it feels like it's like 90% white. And that would be fine if we had more inclusion at our school because we lack the diversity. And I know there's not a lot we can do to change that without like changing the district lines or like who goes to which school. But I feel like if every student, despite their skin color or like their religion or whatever about them, was able to feel included in school, like if they felt like they belonged, then that would almost go in and in with that safety. Like they would feel safe because they would be around people who they felt included by. And then also with, I feel like that also connects to student agency and future-ready. Because if I feel like I'm included and I feel like I belong and that I have people around me that support me, then I will be more likely to speak up and advocate for myself and have that agency and also like prepare for my future and talk to counselors and social workers and teachers about my future. But I feel like without the inclusion, a lot of people don't feel comfortable doing that. So I really hope it can help improve the inclusion, not only for people of color, but just for anyone who feels like excluded.
So representing OALC, I think the thing that could improve the school with the survey would be belonging. It is only a building of 200 people, but I believe that there are a lot of people that think that their voice is not valuable or they don't know how to get it out or that they struggle to trust teachers, peers, or any counselors or staff for that matter. So I think if we're able to create questions and actual ways to involve them and make them feel belonged, then they'll start to open up and interact with each other. And that's what I would love to see at OALC this year.
For Osseus Senior High, I think that I would like it to improve the student agency. And I think this because for me at least, I would feel more, like throughout the school years, I would feel more comfortable if, you know, the work in front of me or the, being like what Naomi said, being college ready, especially junior to senior year, is kind of hard when they push you and they say, oh, okay, now you have to fly to colleges. So I feel like the student agency, I would feel more happy if it was a group.
Y'all need to drop the mic.
Yes, I wanna clap. But before we clap, I wanna hand it over to board members to see if there are questions. This is absolutely a time where we want to be in discussion and dialogue. I know it's important that you all have really wanted the opportunity to have our scholars at work sessions to be able to have some back-and-forth conversations. So we'll hand it over to Vice Chair Brooks to facilitate that discussion from board.
Thank you. Dr. Bass, you said you would use your teacher voice and it sounded the same. I love when the students are here, so I definitely have questions. But board members, you all want to go first?
I'll go first. And I think this is, you know, both for students and everyone else. So we're talking about kind of incorporating, let's turn this into survey questions, right? But is there an opportunity to have these more kind of, you know, qualitative questions? Like now that we have, you know, AI and things that can kind of summarize this data and stuff like that, is there anything like that that we can do?
You're asking the same question I was going to approach. I do think we have tools that we didn't have before.
Right.
The person sitting next to you would be able to speak a lot about that. Yeah. So I do think open-ended is a very good possibility, lots of, you know, short-answer type things. It all depends on what we're building towards. And so what we've just heard is gonna be super helpful for, you know, building towards that.
Because I mean, this was awesome. I'd love to hear it like 500 more times.
To that end, I think we would probably want to see what the report out is from the World Cafe and kind of what we learned there. And then, you know, goes into the survey that we can administer based on that. But I think we'll be really interested in that.
How are you identifying which students participate?
So grades four through 12, and then we're gonna get into a nerd conversation with data and assessment to make sure that we have a random sampling that reflects the demographics of our district. So regardless of which school we're at, we'll have student demographics reflect the entirety of the district. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it won't reflect that school. It will reflect the district?
Population.
Okay. And can I ask why that is? Why wouldn't you reflect the school population?
We wouldn't want to, well, Tom, you probably could speak to the bias part of it.
Yeah. A lot of it just comes back to the size of the sample that we want to pull and resources to be able to draw students. To make inferences about particular schools, you have to have a way bigger sample, right? And if the purpose of this is a district-wide survey, then really that's our primary interest. That's the way that I'm viewing it anyway. I don't know if that's consistent with how you've been approaching it so far, students or...
Very much. Was that the sampling for the World Cafe? Is that what you were asking for?
Yes.
Okay. So then it's just gonna be a random sampling of everyone in the district?
Talk a little louder.
Sorry, a random sampling of everyone in the district? So it's a random sample of everyone in the district?
So perhaps...
Because originally I thought it was per school, but that might have changed.
So when we think about the diversity of our student demographics, right? We want to make sure that in each of those situations that the students who we're inviting into that space reflect our student populace, reflect the overall percentages of our school district.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Be proportionate.
Right.
Yeah. But then my question is like, if we, and I brought this up when we first discussed it. Let's say we have a population. Let's say in our sampling, there's like, it's mostly, like I use this example because it's something I can attest to and relate to. Like it's mostly white students and like a few students of color mixed in there. How do we make sure that they feel comfortable enough speaking up and speaking out about how they're feeling? And then also, if it is proportionate to our district, then how are we focusing on inclusion? Because the people who don't feel included are the people who are part of the minority. So then they will be less represented in these World Cafes if we're doing it like proportionally. So it's just something to think about to maybe like help, like, I don't know, change that a little bit so that everyone is able to have a voice or as many people as we can get.
I think we'll have a more data science-informed response when we get back on the other side of this. This is not my wheelhouse in terms of like how we pull all that. But we know that we are, in terms of our overall population, we're over 60% students of color. So in any one of these sessions, we would have at least 60% of our students in that space would be students of color.
No, yeah. But then like a different example, like students who are part of the LGBTQ plus community, like that would be a minority. That's not over 60%. So then how do we make sure they also feel included? You know, like just everybody, not just students of color.
Got it. Got it. Okay. Again, we'll take that back to the team.
I think that's a really good, good point. And I think that's why we are here because we want to be able to have, yeah, from that student-centered approach. So thank you for that.
What is the sample size for the learning, the World Cafe? Sorry. Do we know that yet?
How many students would be in each one?
Well, total. I don't know if each one, but total.
Our hope is that we have combined across them over 150 scholars.
Okay. And then the survey, I think said it's going out to every student?
The survey, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, grades three through 12?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, currently. All right.
Sorry, so to clarify, is it only one World Cafe for grades nine through twelve and they're like, okay, so it's at the schools? It is at the schools?
So it's?
Yep, there'll be two from four, four through fifth, three at six through eight.
And then they'll be, the largest will be at the high school, which is four sessions.
So we will bring in all of the scholars at once, a central location for each session? No. No.
So, right, no, 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 I think, I think for, for each session, right, all of the scholars would be together in the same space at that site. For example, if you're at the three high schools, right, all the students would come down to the same space and they would participate at, at high school together.
So Palmer Lake would have two listening sessions?
No, they would, if, if we were hosting in Palmer Lake, they'd only have one.
That's what the whole, that's what it asked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Per se.
But four total sessions.
At the high school.
For the high school.
Yeah. Palmer Lake is elementary. Okay. Jefferson, did you, did you ask your question?
Yeah, that, I think, yes.
Okay, all right.
Oh, sorry, I have one more question. Um, um, so with like the World Cafe and everything and the survey and what we're doing, after we have those discussions, discussions and get the results, what's our like, what are our action steps to, like with those results? Like what are we doing with that, if that makes sense?
With the survey results?
Yeah, because I know like the goal obviously is to improve the safety, belonging and inclusion, but how are we going to do that is my question. Or is it like, it depends on what, like what responses we get?
Wait, do you mean the World Cafes or the survey?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So the input from the scholars will help us, uh, inform how we want to refine and adapt the scale so that when the survey goes out, it reflects the most current perspectives of our scholars. Now, what we do with the survey data, right, um, so there's school improvement purposes, where our, our, our building leaders are sitting down with their instructional leadership teams at Data Diggs and they're unpacking that data and setting goals around the data from that survey. So that's the, so it's kind of twofold. One is to refine and improve the survey and then two, building leaders will sit down with that, with that data and their instructional leadership teams to unpack it, to examine it and to set goals around it.
But taking it a step further, where every site has a school improvement plan, it would be important because this was a student engagement survey. Make sure when those sites are sitting there, that we have students sitting at the table. That's the new step.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would, I was gonna add that, you know, this is, um, a collaborative interest of the board. So certainly there's gonna be a board accountability element to it where we're checking in and we're saying, okay, like what are we doing? We did this effort. What are, what, where is it showing up in the school improvement plans and things like that too?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think one comment and one question, um, I think one, I don't know, I don't know if it's just me looking from the outside, but I almost feel like we're overthinking the World Cafe participation. And I don't know, maybe you all had this conversation or will have this conversation, but like will there be a conversation about finding the right representation, um, getting back to Zilia?
Alia.
Alia, Alia's point, like is there going to be a conversation about the student groups that need to be involved? Or the different segments of our student populations that should be represented? Um, versus the sort of holistic, um, approach that to me just feels a little complex versus getting as many voices to the table as possible. So I don't know, that's just, I'm still processing how this is all gonna work. Um, but the question I have specifically for the student reps, um, is the, I think it's the grades four through five questions. So I appreciated the varying levels of like specificity, um, at the different grade levels. Uh, but the grades four through five, I'm looking at the belonging and inclusion questions. I know that we've done a lot of work, um, around belonging in our schools, but the questions feel sort of similar. So did you have that discussion in the last meeting about the similarities between those two questions? Are we confident that, uh, students are going to know the difference when they're responding to those? Anything from last year's questions?
No, difference between belonging.
The belonging and inclusion for grades four through five.
I mean, if I was a fourth grader, I'd be like, didn't you just ask?
Yeah.
We could probably reform one of those to make it more specific and less like the same as the last one.
Well, what we did do is, um, we've combined belonging and inclusion since we've done this.
Okay.
So it's not gonna necessarily be separated out. It will be so those things. We've had this debate. We continue to have this debate about, do we define things for students? Or do we allow their perception of the world to define it for themselves and let them tell us what they believe belonging and inclusion are? And if they think that it's repetitive, they'll let us know that it's repetitive. That's exactly what they'll put down in the paper. But in a way, what we want to do is maybe as open and as broad as possible to allow their way in which they see the world reflect itself on the paper. And if we narrow it down, the more you narrow it down to defining it, sometimes you leave out a way that a student might see it or perceive that question. And so we can easily, um, create the question that would, um, combine belonging and inclusion since we're creating that grouping together. Um, and we don't necessarily, in the scales before, had inclusion. We had belonging, but we never had inclusion. Just the first time that we kind of broke that out. So there will be a little bit more refining done since we're gonna also add agency and we're also gonna add future ready. So we'll, we'll, um, refine some of that. What's interesting about that though, is that no matter how much time you spend on the question, it's always in the mind of the person that's answering it and how they answer that. And that's what the, just the miracle is about this work, is to be able to see how other people see the world.
And as a like former second grade teacher, I want to go in and teach them what each of it means, right? But then I'm not getting their perspective on it. And if they have questions, we'll definitely answer questions. But we really want them to bring their voice to the table and we want to do that in a way where Paula talks about, let's leave it open. And if they do have things that they're struggling with, we'll absolutely help them in that space.
Yeah. Yeah, and we do. We walk around and they'll ask us and we'll help them sometimes with some clarity around questions if they're confused or given examples or we'll talk it out with them too, especially in grades four and five. But it's, what's really so interesting is that, um, grades four and five, they know. They, I mean, it is, it's incredible, some of the responses that we get from this kind of work.
Well, that's what I kind of like about the, the openness and that where we do trust your facilitation to get that, their voice out instead of kind of directing it into what it means.
Yeah.
And I just, not to be like, like wordsmith or anybody, I do think that like when we say teacher, um, I kind of liked how in high school you had like adult in the building or something, only because like I even think of my own kids, like sometimes, yeah, I think kids can be so liberal, especially that Asian, I, I don't want to leave anyone out because I think like, yeah, or like reading corps or like, you know, some, yeah, staff member, cause just to get a.
Yeah, that's a, that's really good feedback.
Yeah.
One, um, thing I'd add to this is that we took a sampling of the questions to show you. But there are a lot of other questions that are gonna be asked. So however we get, we'll get there.
Okay.
Um, with some other questions too, but we just wanted to show you what some of the questions would look like. But we have, um, three rounds for each area.
Okay.
That students will go through.
Three questions for each?
Yeah, for each area.
I actually.
So that's a great idea to make sure you put adult in there as well.
I would love to see even more openness and I'm assuming since you have other questions, it'll broaden that a little bit because I think, um, you know, when you think through processes, what's the starting point and it, you know, they're not all at the same starting point. So, um, which you reiterated to us, um, but I think there's something to be said for, we as a district define these in a certain way. And are we lining up to how we define them in the eyes of our children? And if that's not the, the purpose of the survey eventually, you know, how do we want that to be defined? And are the, is our mission shaping the questions that we're asking, the information?
That's a great comment. Um, actually, the World Cafe is very much aligned with, um, the district's, um, mission of holding space. Um, and when you look at the first question in any World Cafe question, the first one is the big broad, um, question. The second one is how do you really are gonna do it for others? And the third question is the most narrow question in World Cafe, which is, and how am I gonna show up? How am I gonna do this for self? And so, um, a, a good, um, example of that was recently, we just did it, Robin and I just did it for the city of Eagan. They asked us to go out and ask people, how do you thrive? They wanted to find out how the city can help their residents thrive. So the first question was, um, what makes you thrive or what helps you to thrive? The second question is, what are the barriers to that? What's getting in the way of it? And we wanted to get at, they, they actually wanted to get at race, but we didn't ask that question because we knew we would get there. If that was important to somebody, they would name it. And the third question was, how can you help to make sure that someone thrives in your community? What's your participation? So when you think about your, the way that you look at self, others and systems, that's aligned with how your World Cafe will look, um, by the time we get ready to go. Is we'll have the big, biggest one and then we'll really look at how are you gonna do it for others? And how are you gonna show up to self and make sure that everybody else feels included? What will you do? And I think that was the conversation that we really had around the table, which is not just to put it off on other people, but also how are we going to, as students, make sure that everybody feels included and belongs?
And when I say we wrestled with questions, we really wrestled with questions and went back and forth and wordsmith. I think it was such a powerful session for us as facilitators, realizing how intentional the students were about the language for the four, five, right, for the littles, about the language for the high school kiddos. Knowing that we really need to be clear with our questioning and what we wanted and what we were looking for. So I think it was really a powerful session for us as adults as we wrestle with, right?
Have you ever been to World Cafes before or is this the first year?
Have I ever done? With, oh, with this district?
Yeah.
Um, Osseus, yeah, Osseus participated in World Cafes, um, before. And they've also participated with other districts combined collaboratively with other districts in World Cafes. And, um, I sleep on the book, the World Cafe.
Is that when they did the high school, state high school?
That's, that was the whole student conference. We did World Cafe and.
Reimagine Minnesota.
Reimagine Minnesota, we did World Cafe, so.
So, um, one of the ways I'm just thinking about this to the question that you had kind of air cut, whereas when we did our strategic plan, we had the daily desired experiences and it was of staff, of families, of students. So this student survey to me is like, we invited, we want the students to have student voice in the student survey because it's their definition of this. I also think about like Dr. Hall always says, um, best place to learn, best, best place to work. So in this, it's the student's view of best place to learn too. So we'll have, I think as we keep doing our other surveys, like the staff survey or the other stakeholder survey, there'll be other places where it's like, well, what's the adult view on best place to learn? So this is in my mind, like with the student survey, this is the student view of that, um, back to like daily desired experience.
And actually, um, um, Director Tanya, we did that when we, with teamwork, remember? When we did daily lived experience?
Yeah.
We went out and worked with students, um, with teamwork on daily lived experience and made sure that we, there you go. And made sure that we specifically, to answer your question, made sure that we had, um, a grouping of students that, um, traditionally did not feel included, very much included in that conversation, so.
And then can you, uh, this is for anyone that can answer even high level, the touchpoints. Um, so when will we get updates on the World Cafe analysis, on the student survey results? Um, closing the loop with students, like, when will we have that timeline and?
So going back to this timeline here, um, I think, uh, frequency of being updated, um, is as, is as frequent as.
Can I answer it?
Please.
Okay. So right after we meet in cabinet, it'll go out in a superintendent update. So we, we'll get that out. So we'll discuss it, figure out what it is and then I'll send it out to one of the superintendent updates, so.
But there's some natural points here.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Brooks, where it makes sense to update you for sure along the way.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, the next steps, um, includes, uh, here we go. Um, determining our focus questions for student agency and future ready with our student school board reps. And then go ahead and then launch our listening sessions with scholars grade four to, uh, grades four through twelve. Um, I think we've already passed a bunch of questions, so I think we're, we're here. We're here at the end.
I just want to say, I think it's so, I love that you guys are doing this. I think this is, this is just gonna add so much. Um, and if it's ever appropriate, like I'd love to even attend one of the World Cafes.
Oh, yeah.
If we do.
I mean, it's, it's really fun just to be in the space.
Yeah.
Um, if the energy in the room is really incredible, so, um, you know, feel free to stop by and witness it.
Okay.
It's a wonderful thing to witness.
I think that's what I said, we get to have all the fun.
Yeah.
Beyond the data and all those pieces, so.
I just would like to acknowledge, uh, the commitment and dedication of our four student school board reps, not just this evening, but throughout this process, being engaged, being involved, being prepared, whatever it's taken for them to show up and show out. They have done that and just grateful for each of you and we get, your brilliance was on display this evening. So thanks, thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you all, you're free. Give me tea, I have to say. And we'll switch over to our next presenter, senior. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and get started because we got dead air happening on the tape right now. So, uh, our next, we are thrilled to have, uh, we'll have Anthony Panis introduce the two people that are with us to discuss cybersecurity.
I don't know how we follow up. That last piece, but, uh, we'll try and make a riveting ending. Work session here.
Yes, tech people, okay.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to share this important update tonight, uh, as October is Cybersecurity Month. As technology becomes more integral to teaching and learning, safeguarding our digital environment, it's essential for us to maintain trust, protecting student data and ensuring uninterrupted instruction. Tonight, we'll provide a brief overview of our current cybersecurity posture, relevant or recent improvements and the steps we're taking to stay ahead of evolving threats. Uh, I'm Anthony Panis, the Executive Director of Technology, and I'm gonna hand it over to Gerald to introduce, uh, the core of our cybersecurity team now here in Osseary Schools.
Thank you, Anthony. Uh, good evening, um, board members. I'm Gerald Upland, Senior, the Director of Information Systems and Security for the District.
My name is Gutama, uh, Cybersecurity Analyst for Osseus Schools.
And thank you to our voters for our technology levy. Again, one of our core components is helping to ensure we have, um, a quality cybersecurity program to protect, um, what we do. Um, and we, you know, last year we had Gerald step into the cybersecurity role, uh, first time we had a leadership role. And, uh, Gutama is our first ever cybersecurity analyst. So again, as we continue to look at how So, again, as we continue to look at having the right people and the right resources in conjunction for serving and supporting our district, we're very excited about the team we've got together to really move some of our work forward. Today's update will focus on three key objectives, helping the board understand the current K-12 cybersecurity landscape and why it matters, providing insight into the current state of cybersecurity within Osseo area schools, and ensuring the board is aware of the proactive work underway to protect student data, secure systems, and prepare for emerging threats. These objectives will guide our discussion and give a clear picture of both the broader context and our local efforts. In the next several slides, we'll explore the national trends occurring with cybersecurity specific to the K-12 sector. In recent years, the types of malware targeting schools have evolved significantly. Last year in 2024, we shared that the most common threats were a malware threat called QuakeBot and Coinmoat Miner, which spread through spam emails or exploiting system weaknesses through a lot of phishing. This year, we're starting to see a significant shift in those attacks. Sockgulish has become the leading malware in 2025. It tricks users by posing as a fake browser update or hiding in malicious online ads, making it harder to spot and easier to click. Looking ahead, new malwares like NanoCore and ZPHP are emerging. These threats are more sophisticated and highlight how cyber risks in schools are becoming increasingly more complex. The key takeaway is that attackers are constantly changing tactics, and we need to stay proactive to keep our systems and data safe. Last year in 2024, we shared that most cyber attacks started with mal spam, that spam emails carrying harmful links or attachments, and combined methods like drop malware or commonly, as you've heard, phishing emails. These were the main ways attackers got into school systems. Similar to what I shared with malware threats, what we're seeing as a significant change is in 2025 is that malvertisements or malicious online ads have surged now, and that accounts for about 63% of initial infections. These ads look like legitimate, look legitimate, but hide harmful code, and they often appear on websites that seem safe. The shift shows how cyber criminals are adapting. They're targeting everyday browsing habits using trusted-looking website content to launch attacks. It's a reminder that cybersecurity isn't just about email anymore, it's about every click online. The other thing that we're seeing is that cyber attacks are becoming more strategic in the school system. Threat actors are timing attacks to coincide with critical academic periods, like the start of the school year or exam weeks, when schools are under the most pressure. This isn't random. Attackers now plan around school operational rhythms, showing a level of sophistication we didn't see before. They know that during high-stakes times, schools have less flexibility and are more likely to pay ransoms quickly to restore systems. This actually coincided with, we were on a cybersecurity information call with MNIT Services this morning, which showed that schools in Minnesota have the most reported incidents during the month of September out of all the other sectors that were coming in. The key takeaway is that our greatest vulnerabilities come during these high-pressure windows, which means we need strong defenses and contingency plans ready before these periods arrive. Cyber incidents in schools don't just affect technology, they disrupt essential services that families and the wider community rely on. When systems go down, things like meal programs, transportation schedules, and emergency communications can be interrupted, creating real challenges for students and parents. That's why we're focused on service continuity planning, making sure critical services keep running, even during a cyber incident. And we're going beyond recovery. Our goal is comprehensive resilience planning, recognizing that schools are a vital part of community infrastructure, protecting our system means protecting the stability and safety of our entire community. Something that this board usually engages in is kind of the legislative conversation, and so, there have been some nationwide trends. There's a Cozen K-12 legislative report that is attached in your board packet that kind of highlight, across the country, lawmakers are introducing measures to strengthen cybersecurity in education. These efforts include establishing centralized oversight to ensure consistent standards across districts and requiring schools to carry cyber insurance as part of risk management. States are also investing in workforce development by funding cybersecurity training and staffing, recognizing the need for specialized expertise. In addition, new laws mandate timely reporting of cyber incidents to improve transparency and coordination, while updated regulations tighten controls on student data privacy and vendor compliance. Together, these trends show that cybersecurity is becoming a national expectation, and we are aligning our practices to stay ahead. Here in Minnesota, we now have a cyber incident reporting requirement to MNIT Services, and MNIT Services is developing a more centralized response to support state, county, and local government entities through its whole-of-state cybersecurity plan. This approach is designed to strengthen preparation and response capabilities across all state governments. Also to note, at the federal level, changes are also impacting local school districts like Osseo area schools. Recent budget cuts to CISA, or the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agencies, have reduced access to previously free or low-cost resources, such as IT governance assessments, cybersecurity threat scanning, critical security information sharing, and response planning tools. Many of these resources are now unavailable or come with added costs, creating new challenges for districts as we work to maintain strong cybersecurity protections. And lastly, the latest FBI report on the cyber crimes report highlights several important trends in cyber crimes affecting schools. Ransomware still remains the top threat, with attackers locking systems and demanding payment to restore access. The most common incident in schools right now continue to still be data breaches, which shares or leak sensitive information like student records, and phishing attacks, which trick staff into clicking harmful links or sharing credentials. The financial impact of these crimes is rising, as recovery costs and downtime continue to grow. Another growing concern is business email compromise, where attackers impersonate school staff, often in finance or leadership roles, to redirect payments or steal funds. We've also seen some of these compromise or phishing-style attacks in our community, where they're disguised as teachers going out to parents. We had a few incidences of that last year. Fortunately, we didn't see anything this year, but it has occurred. These trends underscore why cybersecurity is not just an IT issue, it's critical operational and financial risks for school. I'll now hand it over to Gerald Edwards, Director of Information Systems and Security, to review with you the state of cybersecurity in Osseo area schools.
Thanks, thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Anthony, Cabinet Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members. One of the tools supporting our security efforts is Red Canary, and that is a 24/7 management dictation response partner. And so, that partner helped us review over 10 billion data parts, totaling around 30.9 terabytes of information to identify and address potentially security concerns. Last year alone, we processed around 27 terabytes of data, representing a 14.4 increase in that volume. Our partner has managed to scale using this cloud-based SIM technology and also strategic staff allocation. To put this in perspective, it would cost Osseo area schools roughly around $163,400 per year just in the technology, just to analyze the data, plus staffing on top of that to review that in a 24/7 hour increment. This year, Red Canary dedicated threat assessment team investigated 461 incidents, uncovering 68 creditable threat targeting, targeting our Osseo area schools. Just two years ago, we had around over 9,000 threat detections. Last year, we were over 21,000, marking 134%, 34.2% increase in just threat detection alone. This year, that the 68 credible threats, that's around a 70% increase from last year of 40. We had 17 classified high severity, 22 mediums, and 29 lows, compared to last year breakdown of six highs, 14 mediums, and 20 lows. And this escalation underscores the importance of our threat classification system guiding timely and effective response to all the security measures, I mean, the security threats that come at. And I'll pass it over to Gutama.
Thanks, Joe. I think I don't need mic, I think we, I'm not good with it anyways. Thanks to you all. To put our cybersecurity work into context, this slide shows the new cybersecurity framework, which provides six key functions, identify, protect, detect, respond, recover, and govern. We adapt this model to the district's needs, but it's a helpful way to see how all of our efforts work together. In the next review slides, I'll focus on three of those functions where my role is most active, training, monitoring, and response. As a cybersecurity professional, I see training as the most effective first line of defense. The district has built a baseline with phishing simulations and awareness campaigns, which are already helping staff spot suspicious emails before they become real incidents. The next step is expanding into world-specific training for HR, finance, and enrollment, since those areas are often the biggest targets. By building this culture of awareness, we lower risks before they ever get to IT. Monitoring is where we make sure nothing slips through. Red Canary analyzes more than 13 billion returns each year, and Microsoft protects thousands of devices across the district. Those tools give us broad coverage, but we don't just rely on them or wait for alerts to come. As a cybersecurity, as a cybersecurity analyst, I'm sorry, I spend much of my time monitoring data flows, investigating suspicious activity, and working with Microsoft and other vendors to keep our systems tuned up against new threats. When an incident happens, the speed is critical. Today, the district relies on Red Canary and Microsoft Defender for 24/7 detection and auditing, while the victim assessment guides us on how to prioritize fixes. But a strong response is not just about tools, it's about people and process. That's why we are enhancing the district incident response plan and preparing tabletop exercises with leadership, so everyone knows the role when incident alters. In my role, I also work with Microsoft and our security partners to fine-tune our system so alerts are accurate and actionable. Thank you for your time. I will now hand it over to you, Gerald.
Oh, that's things, Gutama, nice job. We have built a strong foundation with 24/7 monitoring through Microsoft Defender, Red Canary, and other cybersecurity tools, as well as ongoing phishing awareness efforts. Our work continues with research into threat actor trends to stay ahead of evolving attacks, tailor training for key departments. Enhance an incident response, as Gutama talked about, that includes leadership exercises. Looking ahead, our strategic plan focuses on integrating the current security tools that we have and fostering lasting culture around cybersecurity awareness across the district. We appreciate your time, and we'll hand it back over to Anthony and any questions that the board or any school management has, any cabinet management.
Yeah, Vice Chair Thomas, we'll hand it over to the board for questions. We know there's a lot of information in the packet, whether you got to read all that in your spare time or not. Wanted to make sure that for you and the community in the background, annual reports we're referencing as we continue to look at annual reports that come nationally and locally through a multitude of partners, whether it's the Cybersecurity Information Center or Cozen, which is our consortium of school networking focused on IT professionals across the nation, does a lot of data study around here. So, we can continue to bring all that information in, process in what we're doing as a team, and looking at what we're doing to best protect our organization as we move forward.
Thank you. Board members, questions?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I mean, I think that, like, thank you for this. I know, like, I know my job, there's a huge focus on it, and it just happened to me, I opened like an email from, like, it was a school, it's another school district, my job, and it like compromised, and I sent it to like my staff, I'm like, I can't open this. Oh, I did go through data security training there too, and I was like, can you try to open this? And then both of us, I mean, we just couldn't even like, yeah, so I mean, it's real, and it's hard to like, no, because I'm like, oh, I know this person, and you know, you open it, and so, wow, thank you for all of your work. And it is a lot of information, but it's, glad you guys are on top of it.
Thank you, Anthony, well done.
So, of the 68 threats responded to, how many of those were, like, had an impact or caused damage or, like, had it in that example, like, actually, like, resulted in something?
Great, great question. The good thing is, none of the 68 did anything to us because this is the response plan that we have, and we were able to remedy all of the 68. Now, those 68 is broken out into like malicious, which was the top one, so malicious. And then, as Anthony stated, out of those 68, I think around 40 was around malicious, 27 was around the malware, and then additional was just other, maybe like coming from another school district or some type of link. But our response plan is, you know, we get a notification right away, and then we have an action that we take as a team. So, through teams, we get that action, and within, I would say, a couple minutes, we already have a plan to, one, to put that into like a remediation bucket or a bucket where we could just contain it, so a containment. Once we contain that, and then now we work with the user or wherever, and then now to clear that information out and dispose of that information, and then work with the user to get back to recovery state.
And then, where is the primary source coming through, like, to staff, to, through students, like through Chromebooks, like kind of in layman's terms?
Yeah, it is coming across the board. We see it from staff and from students.
We saw, we saw, we saw intick in the student, but yeah.
It's past MUP.
Yes, and I would say, you know, across the board, Gerald and Gutama can contest, we see probably one alert a day at a minimum come in related to something going on with staff or a student account, in which we're isolating and containing that student account, that device, making sure that, you know, as Gerald said, we're taking remediation action on it. You know, when we first started our program and our partnership with Red Canary, it was a lot of staff-related account compromises, and we are definitely seeing that increase on the student side and why we've got a lot of conversations going on around some of the hardening around student accounts. But how do you do that delicately when you think about a kindergartner and a first grader? You know, how complex of a password can you get before? It takes to put that in, so it's balancing out the level...
Learning numbers and alphabets.
It's balancing out the level of security and protections, and how do we ensure that we're not impacting the learning environment at the same time? So, it's a balanced approach.
Be interesting to see if there's a correlation between a new cellphone policy and a new student intick. I'm just curious.
Hey, Anthony, I had a question. So, I know the high-profile breach in St. Paul, I was wondering, you know, amongst, because I imagine everyone kind of learns from that. Is there any like takeaways that, you know, you guys took or the team took from what occurred there?
I'll share my takeaway, and then I'll let Gerald and Gutama kind of share their insights. You know, one of the things, I was excited to see that this was the first time that the linkage of everything and state resources actually came together. So, I think, I wasn't caught off guard, but a lot of people were caught off guard when the announcement came out that the National Guard was coming in to assist. Well, the National Guard actually has a cyber response division that's specifically geared for coming in and supporting government agencies during the moment of a ransomware attack. But there's steps that have to go through to actually get that activated. So, it was, for me, a good takeaway is the process to get resources in place in a fast fashion outside of our district to... fashion outside of our district to support us are there, and they function and work and can be activated the way they need to, should we need those additional supports in this situation.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Steve, and thanks for that. I think one of the pieces that, I mean, Guduma, we were just talking, he's been a month here, but it feels like a year probably already. But it really emphasized the importance of knowing the job and knowing what could happen at any time. A lot of alerts that we get is actually after school, seven o'clock, eight, 10, one o'clock in the morning on Saturday, like, we're up. And so, we know that, you know, the threat actors, they're not going to go around school time, that's just, it doesn't happen that way. That's more of staff, so we know that if that happens, that's when a staff is clicking on something or something coming, that's during the school time. But a lot of the times these things happen is after school, on the weekend, during the holiday, and so that's why we have to be vigilant, you know, and so, I think to answer your question, it just reaffirms that we have to continue the job, and it's an actual 24/7 hour job, it's not a nine-to-five, right? It's like, our job don't stop, because those attackers do not stop. And so, what we learn from that is, we just got to continue to learn, continue to grow, continue to educate ourselves, and then not only educate ourselves, but make sure that we're educating the district, making sure that we're educating the staff, the team, right, and the students as well, and also parents, right? Like, how do we educate parents on what to do? Because that can also affect parents, and so, what we're doing now is starting to build on how do we, right, how do we educate everyone? And make it fun, right? Don't make it like it's this scary thing, it is, but we could make it enjoyable, and we could make sure that we're doing everything so, as we stated, that when we, you know, we want to leave the district, we want this district to be in a great place, and we're competitors, right? And so, we want to make sure that too, like, we're number one in what we do, but that takes a lot of work.
I mean, just add a 100% idea with what you guys said, and 100% with what you said about, you know, take away from what happened today in St. Paul. You know, sometimes bad things happen and good things come out of that. What I just want to add on that is that we, as human beings, are the weakest part of the system that...
You say that with love.
I hope, you know, out of that result, they still also invest, invest in more of a training, and making sure, as a state, we're investing in teachers, and you know, every part of state-level organizations, or small agencies, or stuff like that, so that we all understand that we are the weakest part attackers are looking for. And it's very, very likely that what happened to them at the state level came through us to one of us. Probably they are like simple phishing, or someone, you know, just comes something over the phone and prompted them to click on something, and a matter of one or two clicks, done, and something like that, so.
Yeah, and I think you bring up a valuable point, and I'll leave it here, but the thing that we talk about as a team, is not like we could prevent it from not happening, is are we ready for when it happens? Right? And I think sometime, we, sometimes it get lost, like, you could protect everything, but you can't. So, it's like, when it happens, what could we do, and how do we respond, and could we recover in a fast manner where we could get everything up and running? So, it's not about, oh, we're going to stop everything, because we can't, and we know that. So, our job is to, hey, when it happens, how do we respond? How do we recover?
I would say the level of sophistication, in particular with artificial intelligence, the phishing emails that we're seeing now, you used to be able to look for words that were misspelled, punctuation that was out of place, things that just didn't line up, and, you know, threat actors are using artificial intelligence and getting a hold of an existing business email and can almost identically replicate that. So, it makes it harder to see and detect.
See?
The other layer, and this is talking with another colleague in another school district, you know, unfortunately, the amount of attacks that have happened nationally to large companies with social security numbers and other information out there, out on the dark web, it's not about a threat actor having all of it, they take and they buy pieces, and then they triangulate together, which they can use artificial intelligence on. One of my colleagues in another district, they had a pretty robust process for how to reset passwords, and having, you know, you had to provide certain confidential PII data to do a password reset over the phone. Well, there was a caller that came in, had the social security number, employee ID, and the staff name, and luckily, when they saw the person trying to change the password, the IP address of where it was coming from was out of country, and they're like, no, this doesn't make sense, and shut it down, but, you know, to be able to imitate an employee now, because there's been so many data breaches out there that aren't even related to schools, they're just pulling that information together and making profiles on individuals.
Yeah, and a lot of that is coming from third parties too, so you could have a good security infrastructure, but the partners that you work with may not, right? And then how do you respond to that? And that's what we're seeing a lot, is around third party, fourth party, fifth party, sixth party, that are getting hacked or getting compromised, and then we're just associated with them, and then we have to respond to that. And so, it's not just us, you know, protecting ourselves, it's protecting our partners as well, or just responding in case our partners fall into an incident.
I'm super thankful that you guys are here.
And awake.
We tried to make it exciting.
You did. I'm just kind of nervous over here now, though. Everything's scary. My question is more about, and I think it's just always good for us as a school district, and you mentioned the referendum, is to always translate to our stakeholders what came out of the referendum, like, and give them specifics, and, because I think it's so helpful, they may hear this whole presentation, but how, what's coming out of the money that was part of that referendum? I think that's a bonus for you guys, I think it's a great way to say, hey, this is the value add we bring, because you guys obviously are a value add to our district, so, do you mind highlighting a couple of things for us that you can think of?
In terms of?
Just out of the referendum, what have we gained?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, the efforts that we're doing in cybersecurity to have the partner we have with Red Canary, to build out a team to actually support the monitoring that's occurring, wouldn't exist without having those, that referendum dollars. I mean, we'd be competing for, do we have the technology in the classroom, do we have the cybersecurity space, do we have the curriculum that's for the students? The technology levy is directly supporting and paying for the multitude of cybersecurity efforts. I think in DTEC, every year, we kind of do an annual overview of kind of the big picture, how the tech levy is being spent. And cybersecurity efforts were just shy of a million dollars out of that technology levy that are going in to support cybersecurity efforts for our school district, which wouldn't be possible without that.
Awesome. Thank you.
We did a shareout too, last, actually last year, at this time, I was just looking it up on cybersecurity and talking about the referendum too, I mean, something that we can definitely go back to, because this is...
Nice touch, Ken.
As I started this job, by the way, I felt like this position came out of this stuff.
So, we got Guduma.
They were looking for a cybersecurity position. I didn't expect any like specific cybersecurity title, job coming out of school districts. You know, most of my experience has been in school districts, but I always wanted to work in school districts, but they don't have no cybersecurity professionals, so I didn't really hope to get a job with the same title I wanted. So, when I started this position, I was like, now school districts started hiring cybersecurity professionals, and, you know, that was exciting, but, yeah.
But that's the competitive nature of trying to...
Leave me in the way.
They are not, I mean, when you look at school districts and what they're trying to do with cybersecurity, the threat isn't any different, and those that are in technology director, coordinator positions, my counterparts across the state are always talking and strategizing, and we are very fortunate in Osceo. There's, you know, I can think of, you know, maybe two other districts that have a dedicated cybersecurity position on staff, which is a recent development in the last, you know, one to three years. It's not a common practice, and again, it's, you know, because we have things like the levy, we've got, you know, amazing resources that allow things like this to happen. Most school districts in the state don't have a technology levy, so, you know, how to find those resources and funds get difficult when, you know, you're looking at the core of how do we, you know, make sure students are learning at the core.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Feel secure and terrified at this point. All right, so just going over the board calendar review, at our board work meeting, our students will report out what we worked on today at our work session. We do have a professional development day on October 28th. A work session on November 11th, we're going to be, HR and a team will be speaking to stack retention. That was a subject that Director Mitchell, who's out here today, wanted us to discuss, so we're going to be sharing that. Our school board reps in November, their next endeavor, we're going to look at 500, specific 500 policies, then they'll come and meet with the board, what do I mean, work session? Oh, in December, yes. So, and then in January, after the organizational meeting, during that work session, we will, the board will get the history and training around standard-based grading, how it came about and the whole work, so that's just a training for the board to know. And then, the scholars or the babies will be back in February, discuss going back and forth with standard-based grading. Standard-based grading is going to be big, so from this point, you know, I haven't talked to Kate or anything, because we're going to gather all this information, but we're getting information from the scholars, we'll have input from the board, but we may, I'm sorry, I mean, it's a word, it has survey, but we may probably need to, at some point during the year, to get information from teachers administration and parents around their input on standards-based grading, so that is just a big one, just want to make sure, bring that up. Probably in March, we'll probably bring the scholars back again and talk about the student survey, like a touch point in which Thomas was talking about. Probably in April, if we did do, I've not talked to Kate yet, if we did do the standard-based grading survey in March, that we can report that out in April of what we received. So, we do have some more areas, if there's more things that you're interested, there is a Google Doc out there, or if there's something you want, another topic that you want, but we went in deep, you guys chose good topics, we went real deep on that, so just let us know, so, time to time.
Yeah, and we were thinking class sizes, especially with knowing kind of what that might look like next year, with the degree changes and the new school, so that was one that we're...
Right, do you want class sizes, like, as the October 15 drop, or class sizes into the future?
Into the future, because like, we know, like, we've had an uptick in kind of interest and concerns about that, so what it is today is certainly not what it's going to look like with all of the changes we're making, so, but having some good discussion and learning about that, and understanding what it's going to look like in the future.
Okay.
But we did used to get a presentation on class sizes around this time.
After the drop time, yes.
Yeah, so if we could fit that in, in November, that would be great.
And then, two things that I just haven't had, I haven't been able to put in there for some reason, just because of my own, but I do want to, I would love to talk about, like, I don't know what we call it, out-of-school time, or like activities, and just potential partnerships, just to ensure that, just to have a conversation of people, of our kids having access to...
Extracurricular.
Extracurricular activities.
Specifically after school?
Well, no, I mean, yeah, kind of, like camps, or how we could partner with community ed, or like, could we partner, just what foundations, like, to be able to, so kids can participate, because I think it, you know, if you don't have resources, and I think that's a huge part of someone's educational experience, and I think we should be looking at that. And I think the other thing, I think I've talked to a couple of you about, is just like, just like around our, like, truancy or absenteeism, and how that plays into just some of our achievement, discipline, engagement, sense of belonging, and things like that.
So, are you looking for data, Kelsey, or correlation, or...
Yeah, just like where we are, I mean, I was kind of thinking even, like, but we talk a lot about like having a sense of belonging and being connected. I think that it's hard when you, when kids aren't like coming to school, or, you know, there's barriers to school attendance, I think that's a huge piece, because I mean, I remember back in the day, you'd get like an award for like perfect attendance, and I think that, I mean, we're, across the state, I think there's a crisis, I mean, there is, it is, you know, with kids attending school, and what are those barriers, and so...
That may fit with, we had started some conversation in the last vision card about operational metrics.
Yeah, we're adding that.
So, that may fit back in there too.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
Absentee is a nice term, yeah.
One topic I had thought of, and I need to add, my bad, is about tech use in the classroom, and just findings, you know, where we're at, and like the percentage of how much use is currently being done, and then impact on students, and I think there's been a lot of studies that have come out, and just how that's impacted learning, and so just be curious to see where we're at as a district.
So, teacher-directed technology use?
Teacher-directed technology use, yep.
And we can talk with us at our chair vice chair meeting and figure out the flow and flush them out too.
And I will add it, I promise.
Yeah, sorry. Keep that in mind.
It's okay, we got them now.
We got them all down, but, yeah. Vice Chair, folks.
All right, where are we at?
A adjournment.
Adjournment, so a meeting is adjourned.